Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Well, the first items are actually kind of exciting. We talk about this every year, how it's a rare night that you guys kind of come out from behind the unappreciated midnight calls and actually get to have your eight minutes on the spotlight. You know, we appreciate all the many, many hours of work, the amount of times that your personal lives are disrupted. And as chiefs and officers, we know that you are the guys that go to every call, even the third, two Main Street call in the same night. So, you know, I just want to say on behalf of the board and on behalf of everyone in the village, thank you all for all your hard work and a special thank you to all the officers. So, it's a special night to swear you guys in. Personally, I'm very excited that, you know, people I've known for a long time. Dave and I started not too long apart in the fire department. It's been fun watching Dave go from like the kid to now the chief. It's just good fun. And I can't think of anyone better. He's always been a leader, even when he was young. He had a great spirit and had a great dedication that I see in every one of the officers that are here tonight, too. And to see Jimmy back again, we appreciate that because I don't think anyone's given more hours in the last 100 years of the fire department than you. I can't speak for the first 30, but in the last 100 years. I mean, it's not often you have, you go to the firehouse and then you hear someone talking and you realize it's the chief and he's underneath the truck fixing something. It's truly amazing. We appreciate all that you guys do. And let's do the official part first, which is the appointment of fire department officers. We're resolved to appoint the following officers there in the fire department for a one-year term. Fire Chief David Dowd, First Assistant Chief Daniel Billings, Second Assistant Chief James Ruffler, Lieutenant Patrick Colentuno, Lieutenant Andrew Lamberty, Lieutenant Steven Mangiacati, Lieutenant Maximo Trauma. I'll make the motion if I can get a second. All in favor? Congratulations. And now let's do the actual swearing hands. So I thought we'd do it in reverse order. So if we get the two lieutenants to come up.
I thought there should be three, so I could have done them first.
Yeah, they could say state your hand. So you raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Andrew Lamberty.
Of the village of Irvington.
Of the village of Irvington.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of lieutenant.
The duties of the office of lieutenant.
According to best of my ability.
According to best of my ability.
Congratulations and good luck. Be safe.
Yeah, usually it's on the side of the mic.
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, James Ruffler, of the village of Irvington.
Of the village of Irvington.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the State of New York.
End of the United States. And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Second Assistant Fire Chief.
The duties of Second Assistant Fire Chief.
According to best of my ability. Thank you, James. This is for you, Son. All right, you ready? I, Daniel Billings.
Wait just a second.
Blown away out there.
I, Daniel Billings.
I, Daniel Billings.
Of the village of Irvington.
Of the village of Irvington.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of the office of First Assistant Fire Chief.
Of the office of First Assistant Fire Chief.
According to best of my ability.
According to best of my ability.
Congratulations. What's that? I, David Dowd.
I, David Dowd.
Of the village of Irvington.
Of the village of Irvington.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of fire chief.
The duties of the office of fire chief.
According to best of my ability.
According to best of my ability.
Congratulations. Picture with everybody? I feel like I can try to do it from memory, but I know I'll screw it up. Just raise your right hand. I, Maximo Trauma.
I, Maximo Trauma.
Of the village of Irvington.
Of the village of Irvington.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of lieutenant.
The duties of the office of lieutenant.
According to best of my ability.
According to best of my ability.
Park, what's over? I'll take a quick one and then if anyone else wants to.
I just wanted to say, I know Brian spoke, I just wanted to thank you all on behalf of all of us. I just wanted to add my voice and I'm sure my colleagues have the same feeling that we greatly appreciate all you do. And like Brian, I think, David, I think you and Tara went to nursery school together much earlier. And I see a lot of Home Place volunteers over here right behind my house. So we are a small town and you are such a critical part to it and we really appreciate what you do. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Sebastian. Francis.
Next up is a proclamation for Arbor Day 2019. I guess I could read it. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Irvington has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways, now therefore I, Brian C. Smith, Mayor of the Village of Irvington, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019 as Arbor Day. And in the village of Irvington, I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and support our community forestry program, and further I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of future and present and future generations. There will be tree planting on April 26 at 10:00 a.m. on North Ferris Street. Everyone's invited to attend.
I've been there. Years past.
In much more drabbing business, we had a check over $25,000, which was for Pearl River Plumbing, doing business at Virtuci Contracting. Kind of related, I guess. It was for the firehouse interior project for $112,080 and $0.05. How far along is that project there?
It's got a few more weeks to go, I'm sure. They're making progress.
So we have two pieces of correspondence. One is from Kristen Wilson, which is a, I'm actually just going to read the encouraging line, which is that Marty Dolan and Two Clifton did not meet requirements for short-term rental. I don't think, I mean, we're going to talk about short-term rental ultimately.
Yeah, it was kind of addressed.
She read it last time.
Yeah, it was.
And to me, it's not really deranged the law. I mean, that's for about a particular, first application, so. And Chet Kerr also wrote a nice designation of origin of his parkland. Since we're going to be, you know, talking about that anyway, maybe I'll hold off. Maybe come up and state some of the key highlights. And with that, I'll turn it over to public comment, if anybody has, please.
Hi, I'm Linda Krueger from Ten Home Place. A few months ago, I, oh. A few months ago, I sent a letter to Mr. Schopfer, copy to all of you, about the prospect for getting electric vehicle charging stations and public lots in the village for residents who don't have private off-street parking, so we could get EVs. And I just wanted to remind you about that and see if any progress had been made, if there's any way I could help in terms of preparing grants or anything else that I could help with, because I'd really love to see it happen soon.
Sure. I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, Larry, you give an update, but we've definitely been looking to find locations throughout the village where it would be appropriate and feasible. So that was, I think that was kind of phase one. And then I think once those are kind of really solidified, then we can look for the grants.
Yeah, we have, we know the grant, we have the grant identified. We have locations identified and know one of them is the Aqueduct, which I know you were particularly interested in. And we're working with a contractor to get pricing and depending on how that conversation goes, then we'll decide where and how many of these go in or not. I mean, but that's, we're still gathering the basic information.
Any sense about how long that all could take?
No, at this point, I'm still waiting on information from the contractor, so it's probably a few months away still.
Okay. Well, if there's anything I can do if the offer stands, then you have my email. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Any other public comment?
Hello, everybody. Rocco Rasulo, President of the 120th Office of Lieutenants Corp. Just wanted to discuss or bring up the fact that at last week's meeting, there was some indication that the church's property, or at least the expansive church's property bordered Broadway. Just so you know, there is no access from that little strip of property that is.
Only spirit.
Part of Broadway, yes, yes. There is, you know, a driveway that goes there, but it only goes to the house. There is no through-thorough fear. So similar to Mark's question was, I don't know, or I don't think that it should be considered in your, you know, Broadway project. Okay. Thanks.
And that's the strip that leads to the part of their property that's on Sunnyside Lane. Okay, right.
Any other public comment? Because we have two people left, because Joe's not public. Otherwise, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions? Otherwise, I'll actually ask someone else to make a motion, since I wasn't here and I didn't want to hold them minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone have a second?
Second.
All in favor? One abstained.
You can watch the, perhaps.
Yeah, make sure the minutes are right.
We talked about you.
Uh-oh, now you gotta watch. Continue public hearing, consider the 2019, 2019, 2020 operating budget.
I'm going to be handing out a new recap sheet of last time's proposed changes as to where we are right now.
This replaces the page that we have here?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Get rid of that one.
I don't know if you want to recap anything for the general public, but we've been working on the budget processes this January.
Do you want to maybe, you want to reconcile what changed from here to here?
Sure. We have a resolution that accompanies the adoption of the budget. And what changes here, last meeting, there was a proposal to put in tree wells for the amount of $12,000. There's restoration to the aid to municipalities at $35,000. And then also request from the Historical Society to increase the amount for the rental of storage space that they have. So it's increased that line by $1,500. So we have an increase of one revenue, $35,000, revenues are up, and expenses, an increase of $13,500. So the net difference is actually a negative, right? It's a lower tax rate. To correct.
And I'll change the, it's 7.8120 instead of 7.8233 per thousand.
Oh, in the resolution.
In the resolution.
Correct.
Right. Well, but there's still one other item to bring up, but that'll change that slightly. So we'll, but we'll discuss that shortly.
That's the watering?
Yeah.
So I have one question. That I'm sure I've asked this before, Larry, so you have, Brenda, you'll have to allow me to be a little bit mindless. Can you talk about the cable fees? The section of.
The cable fund?
Cable fund, right. Can you talk about that a little bit? I wasn't clear. Let me try to get to it. I mean, it's got some odd items in it that I just don't have any understanding of.
So we'll give you the history of the Cable TV Fund and I'm going to give you a little foreshadowing of what might be recommended by staff, not for this particular budget year, since it's obviously tonight's the potential adoption of it. But the Cable TV B Fund was originally set up with the idea that the funds provided by the cable TV providers, at the time it was only one, now there's two, the public access or governmental access funds that came from Cable Vision, now Optimum, Altice, and Verizon, that those monies needed to be essentially segregated and used specifically for capital-type purposes related to cable TV. There's some very specific provisions in the laws that govern all of this and the franchise agreements themselves that talk about ensuring that we use those funds for capital purposes, otherwise they potentially would have to be paid back to the cable companies, which clearly is not what we want to do. So the Cable TV Fund was established to have a vehicle to build out a cable television studio. This is going back probably 10, 15 years. And to operate that studio and to, you know, in order to have access to governmental channels. What's happened since then, to be perfectly honest, is that there was really no space for a studio and not a great demand, frankly. So the school actually built out a studio that's used by their students and for video production. I'm not sure how they're using it exactly now. And so this fund was originally set up to account for all of those operations. To be honest, going forward, I think we're probably going to end up winding down this fund. It's kind of passed its useful life and frankly, peg fees paid by cable TV providers are probably going to go by the wayside. Not saying completely, but I think the world of cable television and digital video delivery is overlapping, to say the least. And a lot of this is really going to be less meaningful. So, but again, we're still accounting for it separately. It still stays in here, but it's.
So does the public have access to the studio that the village will pay for?
We've never, we've never made the decision to take on a public access component. There's three components. There's educational access and governmental access. The public access, we've never taken on, to be perfectly honest. Greenberg has. We've, any of the local demand that there may have been for actual public access, we've directed over to Greenberg, frankly, since they had the facilities to handle that. But we've never had a local group that's wanted to access for video production from the general public. So it's really limited to educational and government.
I have to say, for years when I was in college and out, I had made use of community cable access for both production and for post-production.
I can't hear you, Mark, I'm so sorry.
I just said for years when I was in college and out, I'd made use of community access television facilities for both production and post-production. So it's got a place in my heart, although I haven't, you know, really been involved doing video for years.
In the older days, the, I'm not talking about your days. In the older days in Irvington, the local cable company, the cable company actually has. The cable companies had facilities that the communities that were franchisees could use. And they decided long ago that that was not cost-effective for them, so they kind of pushed it down on the local level. And frankly, for a village of our size, it's not cost-effective either. I mean, for community access.
Well, now with digital video software and, you know, Vimeo.
In half a second, you can, yeah, exactly. You can be on live anytime you want.
So I have a question for you, though, in terms of, I didn't understand the numbers. I guess that's what I didn't understand. Like, I see the peg fees and then I see a village fund, and I just didn't understand what the village fund was. And then if we continue over to the next page, then there's an empty payroll tax, a publicity line, and a social security line. Is that some kind of, is there a partial employee benefit that's in there or something?
Yeah, it's for the person that works to do switching between cameras for these meetings, actually, to broadcast these meetings and then to trim them down and get them prepared. So, yeah, there is a small component.
Yep, okay, thank you. You answered my question.
Like I said, this, probably in the next year, Brendan and I were talking about it last week.
Bringing it into the general fund. The other expense is actually the airing of these meetings and the cost of that.
Yeah.
So we're probably bringing it into another line within the general fund.
This, can this money be applied?
Yeah.
To airing of government access?
Yeah, it'll just, it'll all.
Integrated in.
It'll all get shifted over to the general fund, so nothing materially changes. It's really just presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So the one follow, yeah, the one follow-up item related to watering and, you know, the desire to water the, both the new plantings and existing annuals that are planted each year. And in having a conversation about it with our superintendent of Public Works, it looks like we can have a plan that involves voluntarily having an employee come in an hour and a half or two hours early. We haven't figured out the exact timing yet. And then we'd be able to leave a little bit early without incurring overtime in order to do that. The watering would happen early in the morning. Hopefully, it's a fairly quiet operation. I suspect it's a pickup truck and a sprayer. But it really needs to be done at that hour when there's no traffic and parking and all that, or a little parking, I should say. The $5,000 that we're recommending to be put into contingency is really in a situation where we don't have a volunteer or we can't have an employee come in early and leave early, that we need that employee, you know, for the full working hours, regular working hours, so that would incur overtime. Or if there are no volunteers within the union, we may need to bring someone in from the outside. We have a short, a part-time list of available people that we can bring in. So it's a little bit of, you know, just cushion to make sure that the plan works and, you know, we're hopeful that it's a fairly minimal cost.
We do have the hardware, the tank in there.
Yes, I believe they've made arrangements for that.
So what was that last question?
The tank, it's going to be, there'll be a tank that gets loaded on the back of a pickup truck that's used for watering. So I think they consulted with some of the neighboring communities and kind of figured out what the best thing was.
So it's not like volunteers out there to water? This is somebody, has to be somebody who has the license to drive the truck and the training.
Yes.
To do this.
Yeah. No, it's an employee.
Yes, that's what I thought. When you said volunteer, I didn't want people to think that they could volunteer.
No, I meant, yeah, volunteer for the unused hours.
For that position.
Right.
So how early is early that they're going to be watering?
5:30.
I just don't want to interfere with traffic down to the train station.
Yeah, I mean, it could be as early as 5:00. We're not sure, you know, exactly how much time we're going to need. It's going to probably add and flow, depending on how many new trees we have out there. Right now, we have a lot.
Depending on the weather.
Yeah, the weather, as well.
So I just wanted to make two comments, which I did show the board right before this. One is which I really think that it'd be worthwhile to make use of the Tree Commission's expertise and probably also the Beautification Committee to talk about the planters and stuff, just so.
Yeah, we will.
You can get some good watering feedback. And as you know, based on the season and even year-to-year seasonally, the need for water changes, sometimes it can change abruptly, like you don't need water for weeks and all of a sudden you've got, you know, three 90-degree days in a row and everything is urgently in need of water. So.
Yep. Yeah, we'll take the time to develop that. We haven't, as I mentioned earlier today, there, you know, we don't have an exact plan of how we're going to attack this. We have an idea of how we think we can do it from a personnel standpoint, but the actual implementation of it, we need a little time to develop.
Just one other suggestion or just an aside is, you got, if you would, because we're talking about Main Street, but really it's wherever street trees have been planted and probably in a two-year window would be, you know, this year's planting, last year's planting, that's where you can achieve the greatest success in tree survival. So, you know, like the trees that have, I think there've been a number of trees planted right outside this building on North Ferris for the last couple of years. So at least one of those from last year probably still could use watering to help along in the driest sections of the season.
Yep.
I would add, and I'm really glad you brought this up, Mark, this need, but the Veterans Memorial Plaza area would be also included in this and even around at the end of the parking lot, where there's a little section of trees and right along the St. Barnabas property, there are three trees there and you certainly want to include those.
Yeah, absolutely.
So whatever advice you get from the Tree Commission, it's about those bushes and those trees, and I'm sure they'll want those to all survive. Thank you.
So if that, if that suggestion is acceptable, I think Brenda's run some slightly revised numbers.
It'll increase the rate slightly to 7.8147 per thousand.
Seven?
Dot 8147. And it still brings out a percent increase below zero. It's a decrease of .03%. So the rate goes down slightly from the current.
So it's slightly 5,000.
Pretty level, yeah.
There you go. There's your translation.
Should we take 5,000 out of the appropriate fund balance and?
Yeah, exactly. If you want to.
So that number, what you said at the bottom of the right hand, tonight, you know.
Right.
Is that a .07 it's now?
So we would put $5,000 into contingency.
Right.
To be transferred into whatever line will be for the watering.
Right.
The labor for that. So it would increase expenses by $5,000 and increasing the rate per thousand up to seven, actually decreasing the rate per thousand to 7.8120. I'm sorry. 7.8147.
Increasing, yes.
Decreasing from the original.
So Brian, what I was going to suggest is this really should be an ongoing yearly, an annual expense, because you're going to be planting trees and you're going to have landscape that you want to maintain on Main Street and the side streets. So it's not like you can really do it one time.
No, no, I was actually saying something else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Lower the appropriate fund balance that we're taking.
Oh, 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 so you're right, got you.
Take it down by 5,000, be up to 5.01 or whatever. That way, you know, it's a little less that we have to come up with for next year. Because we did that, we took it off $1,000 last year. It's just the surrounding area.
Yeah.
Actually, the question I was asking is the bottom number, the, you know, the final percentage increase. Here it says .07.
Point 03.
Point 03.
Okay, so that one changes to, okay.
Minus .03.
Minus.
Once we back in, just make it zero.
All right, very cool. All right, very cool.
Anybody else have questions on this, or are we open up to the public?
And so, just in terms of the whole budget, anything in the budget, I'm pretty happy with where things are. I think it was well-done and thorough. Thank you.
And thank you to all the department heads that worked with us.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, one thing that we've always tried to do here is, is have the expenses in the budget match the actual expenses, and I think that we were able to, and also move things in that should have been not been, you know, in the capital budget, and we're actually kind of annual recurring things. We've done, I think, a heck of a job, but we did that, obviously, with the police car, which was a big one a long time ago, so it was new one every year. Then we've started to add the paving into the annual budgets, which again, makes sense. It's a special item. And then I think this year, with the Recreation Department, we looked at a lot of the budget lines that were over and said, hey, this is what they actually cost. Decide, because we have to increase it if we want to continue the same service level, or, you know, we have to change our service level. We decided to increase the, you know, keep the same service level, but actually reflect the cost. So I think that, again, it's another budget where we can expect to hit our targets, you know, there's no funny numbers in here. We do use, we are appropriating some fund balance, but that's only because our fund balance is higher than we, you know, I think, it's not higher than it should be, but it's definitely well above the level that New York State recommends. And, you know, my view on that, and we've talked about it here many times, is that that was money that we were probably too conservative with, and we overtaxed in the previous years, and now we're giving some of that back to offset this year's increase, so.
And we've also used, on a very judicious basis, we've set aside some fund balance money to pay for capital, specific individual capital projects, smaller capital projects, to avoid the borrowing on that as well.
Exactly. Those are all my comments. Otherwise, I'll just turn it over to the public, if anyone has any questions or comments. Anyone from the public want to talk about the budget? This is when our friends at the board of that are very jealous.
Can I give a little word of caution, just, if that's okay?
Sure.
So this past year was the last year of the phase-in exemption, so that's now off our books. The phase-in exemption hurt the first year and was okay the next two years, and this is the last of those two years. So it will be harder next year. And the other thing, too, is, and we have to really pay, we have to get into the mode of having full value exempt, full value assessments on our books here. For years, we didn't, as you know. And so it was very easy to look at our assessment roll and see it go up and down by 1% or, you know, whatever direction it was going. That was a true indication of what the, of what your, either lost assessments were, or your new building construction was. That was a good reflection of that. Now, the value's gonna float up and down based upon value changes in any given year. If the assessor sees market value changes of 1%, you know, across village-wide, they're gonna make a change of 1%. That doesn't mean you have 1% more you can tax people, because their assessments have gone up. So it's a little something we'll be talking about next year in the budget process, and something that we'll be getting kind of more accustomed to. More accustomed to, but getting more detailed information from Greenberg about what those changes are. The tough part is, you know, not, some neighborhoods are gonna go up faster than others, and some may go down.
That was one of the things, I'm glad you brought that up, because I want to, you know, also caution people that although it's a slight decrease, .03%, some people are gonna see, you know, fairly, you know, sizable increase, especially if you were phased out for the.
Well, that, for sure.
You know, so it's not, everyone across the board isn't gonna get a, this is a small decrease. It's, it depends on your assessment levels.
Right. So, you know, it'll be, it just gets more challenging as we go, so, just a word of caution. Sorry to rain on your parade.
Yeah. You're wasting my time.
Sorry.
So when everybody comes in to complain to Brenda?
They'll say, I don't understand the rate.
Why, right.
My taxes went up.
Right, my taxes went up, but you have a negative increase. Explain that.
Plus, their assessment value increased.
So you may, you may have sessions of discussions, but I'm sure that, you always do, you're always very cooperative with the public when they need answers, so.
Absolutely.
Many, many may come and ask.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Next, we'll take a vote. Whereas a public hearing was truly advertised, opened on April 1st, 2019, and whereas the tax rate for 2019-20 shall be set at 7.8147 per thousand per assessed value, now therefore be it resolved to adopt the 2019-20 village operating budget with the following modifications, as discussed, I guess. I mean, the rate actually includes everything now.
Yes.
Further resolve that water rates shall increase by 2% and sewer rates by 7% as follows, as detailed below. I'll make the motion if I can, a second. All in favor?
Have a budget.
Next.
It starts with N D.
To continue the public hearing, to consider a local law amending the zoning code to permit short-term rentals. I missed the last meeting, where we had, you know, a couple, you know, obviously had a discussion, and we had a couple of modifications. You may want to point out what those were.
Actually, it's just one modification, we talked about two.
That's true, there was the other one, yeah.
Well, we only, the board, if we just found one, and that is, and the requirement, there's a, requirements for operating short-term rental, three pages into the local law previously, and still, at the beginning of its, the maximum number of days of dwelling, or part of a dwelling may be rented out as a short-term rental, is 180 days per year. And this, the language I'm gonna read now is added. For at least 90 of these days, the owner or lessor of the dwelling must be physically in residence at such dwelling during periods in which rooms are rented. And then the other issue, the other provision we decided not to change was, somebody had suggested different language for short-term rentals not being used to host parties, and when we looked at it, it just makes sense to do it this way, because we were afraid that the other language could be parsed to exclude things where this is pretty comprehensive. So there was no change made there. Other than that, it's the same one we've been considering.
The board have anything to say, we talked about the last Wednesday as well, that the public session. If not, I'll open it up to the public for any public comments. Is it our fourth public hearing?
It's on, actually, it's on the revised resolution. Yeah, I think, I think it is.
I think it's fourth, yeah. I didn't cheat luck. Maybe I did, so I've got this.
Yeah, I think it was two in March and two in April.
If there's no public comment, I'll make a motion to, to end the public hearing, close the public hearing. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Who's the second? Sorry. Janice?
Janice, I think. Who was the second? I think you got the second.
Yes, I got it.
Thank you. That's why I didn't.
I didn't mind if somebody else said second.
Whereas.
Just so you know, I left the revised resolution. It's all, all that did was incorporate today's date into the resolution, that's all, just in that first, whereas.
Whereas a public hearing regarding the local law amending the zoning code to permit short-term rentals was duly advertised, it opened on March 4th, 2019, continued on March 18th, 2019, April 1st, 2019, and April 15th, 2019, and closed by the Board of Trustees on April 15th, 2019. And whereas the Board of Trustees issued a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, now therefore be it resolved to adopt the local law amending the zoning code to permit short-term rentals. I'll make the motion if I have a second. All in favor?
Well, well done.
Next one is, again, we discussed it last.
All right, could I just make a comment, not about this short-term rental, I just, I just wanted people to be aware that the, I don't know any more about this, except I went to the State of the County address, and County Executive George Latimer had one line in his address about having, had discussions with Airbnb about a county sales tax that Airbnb would be included. And he didn't say short-term rentals, he didn't say bed, all that's the only thing I know. I didn't have a chance to go back and ask whoever might know more about it, but apparently they are working on, at the county level, to have a sales, like a hotel tax on those kinds of rentals. So that's all I know about it, but as Larry explained to me, a county tax doesn't come to us.
Not, not the hotel tax.
Right, not that hotel tax, the regular sales tax does.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not like the sales tax where, but that's, the sharing amongst the levels of government with the sales tax, that's written into the legislation adopted up in Albany.
Right.
The hotel tax didn't include anything about sharing, so it's not gonna get shared.
Right. But the fact that Greenberg, we were part of the Greenberg Town Resolution to consider hotel taxes that we would keep, and perhaps this will happen, but.
Gordon, you authorized.
Yes, he authorized it, yeah.
So authorized you to impose that.
Right. So it would be our own, it would be our own, and it would layer upon the counties if they're, you know, to the extent that there is one.
So I'm not, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do this, but when it came up in this discussion, I thought it was relevant to our people who are considering doing this or wanted to know about that, but I guess keep an eye on whether or not the county does this, and then what we decide to do. Just FYI. Okay.
Sorry. Number one. Next is an appeal of water bill for 12 Main Street. We met with the resident last Wednesday, and we had a couple of follow-ups, which I believe we have answers to.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I need to look into the history of the billing, the water consumption at the Burnham Building. So we went back into time, and then they have fluctuations between the different quarters. So it's not quite apples to apples, but if you add up the 12 months of this past year and the 12 months prior to that, they're within 10 units of each other. So there's no real significant change in the consumption there.
But if the consumption had been, if they hadn't used their own faucet, then how would it be?
My check number also, I asked the Wyvern when it actually, when they did the power washing. And it had, they did it in November.
But a follow-on from the resident is that they were doing pointing and power washing at the same time, cleaning the joints out in the summertime, so not just in the fall. So there was two stages, I guess, of possible water usage.
Right. No, in the, I mean, you, yeah, you got an answer to the question.
So absent of a higher water bill, I don't know how much water is consumed in that process.
A considerable amount of water is consumed in washing brick and mortar for repointing.
I mean, I do, I do think it's a bit of a leap to say that he used his water for the power washing. I mean, that's the, I mean, I.
Or for any.
Yeah.
Also a leap to figure out how this guy got a $3,800 bill.
Say it again, Larry, I can't hear you.
It's also a leap to figure out how this guy got a $3,800 bill, when his consistent numbers are $266.
Right.
I'm not sure what the answer is here.
Well, I thought an important number in the letter was the situation, maybe it's not important to anybody else, but in a, in a time when he did find that there was a faucet running during a period for, you know, full, open faucet, then the bill instead of 200 or 300 was 900. So that seems like, if I, if someone said to me, what would be a fair, in my book, and I don't know, you know, where anybody else stands on this, I would think as, as a customer, given how odd this is, and as I mentioned in the work session, it's not a, it's not a property that has a lot of summer lawn, that's, this is a property on Main Street. So if somebody were gonna say to me, what would be, in my opinion, a fair compromise, I would say $900 would be, what I would think would be fair.
Personally, I thought it was pretty fair, you know, Larry and Brenda offered was kind of, you know, giving the base rate only, cut it in half anyway. I mean, to me, it's, the other part of the mystery to me is that there are tenants, even if they are water-conscious and things like that, because I know that, you know, like in my own house, I had a crazy bill, and it's because the toilet was running. You know, it's not, it doesn't have to be a crazy leak in the walls, it can be the fact that, you know, you went away a bunch of weekends and no one jiggled the handle before you left. You know, it's, I was always shocked at how much it added up in my house. But this is a mystery. You know, I think he's a great guy, and, you know, it's really unfortunate. You know, it's, we almost, we were saying, we almost wish he said, I had a leak, you know, and it would have been easier, you know, it's, it's just a strange one. So, you know, there's, I think that there's a lot of things that happen with water that are, I mean, I think Rick could tell a good story. I'm all through it again. So, you know, it's a, it's a tough one, because it's hard to completely set precedent and just, you know, sorry, just paid $200, I'm calling his daddy, because then it's, you know, it's, it's really hard.
That's why, I mean, I wouldn't say you should charge, you know, we used to say, oh, it's usually 200 to 300, yeah, that's, but I, so I'm, I'm going with the, the worst-case scenario that, that could be imagined, given his past experience, which, you know, is still, what's 900 is how much more than 200. You know, it's still a giant increase, but, you know, like, everybody will, you know, make their own point of view clear, but that's just where I would come down.
To, if you want to move this along, there's no resolution on the agenda, so anyone here is free to make a motion to take an action and see where it goes, so.
Well, I just have to say that I have to recuse myself, because Richard and Gal are good friends of mine, so I don't feel like I can make a motion.
Well, I'm glad you weren't using their water, though.
You stayed overnight.
I'm accusing myself because I was taking water from them.
Yeah, exactly, I took a lot of baths. I do think it's a difficult, a difficult decision to make, which, what's fair.
Right. Well, I certainly consider myself friends, but I, Phil, I can't have been there for 40 years, I think I'm friends with almost everybody in Irvington, so.
Just to, so there was a bill of over, excuse me, over $3,000, and the various adjustments you did wound up reducing it to 17.
1744, yeah.
Yes, and that's, that was to eliminate the excess charge, which is charged when there's an excessive amount of water used. The rate goes up after 100 units of water.
So you eliminated the excess charge, and you eliminated, I'm assuming, any kind of leak fees and.
Oh, yeah.
So this is, this is the bottom line, this is the amount of water that was in fact used. And how it got used will probably till the end of time remain a mystery, but it was used. And this is a rental property, meaning that there are apartments?
Yes, that's what I've been told. I don't, I don't know the property.
It's a rental property.
I think he said that.
Um, yeah, I think he has said this thing, it's.
There's three units.
Three units, okay.
And his doctor's office, his office.
And the doctor's office.
His professional office. Ernie's in-place property, so it's not a resident, it's a business name.
So, yes, it's a doctor's office, I guess, on the first place, on the first floor, and then I've never been upstairs.
His own way, Ernie's in-place property.
So we don't know who didn't jiggle the toilet?
It's such a tough one, I mean, I'm gonna make a motion to, hey, even round down to 1744 to 1700 even. Again, it's just, it's just a tough one, because every time someone has a high bill, it's gonna be, you know, it does kind of set some kind of precedent. That's why I think the, you know, kind of waiving the, you know, waiving everything we can waive, without just saying, you know, come up with just a random number, I think it's just a, it's a good policy to have.
I agree.
So I'll make a motion to reduce the bill to $1,744.04, which is Larry's exact map. If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I vote no, for what it's worth.
Thank you.
I want him staying.
Yes, got it.
And tell him we, we're sorry it happened, too. I mean, it's, yeah, you seem like such a lovely gentleman that I'm not friends with, I know who he is, but I'm not.
Like I said, I'm.
Good thing we're.
I feel like I'm friends with so many people in Irvington that, you know, it's hard to.
Next item is approval of standing contracts, 201805, for heavy equipment. This is for static bouche's contract.
Yeah, that's all, same, same pricing, everything's the same. So we're recommending an extension, which we'll do for one year, and then a year from now, we'll do, we'll do another bid, yeah.[1784.12] Do another bid. Yeah.
Is this an as-used, or is there a base amount that is part of the contract?
Just as-used.
I can't remember.
Yeah, no, it's as-used. It's, it's got a list of daily rates for specific types of equipment, and we pay for only what's provided.
Yeah, I, my recommendation was just that, is that we really, after the second year, we really should redid this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's fair. That's, that's why, but I think for the, for the one-year extension, I think at the same rates as the initial, you know, these prices only go up, you know, in terms of labor rates and things like that, so.
Okay. Being resolved, the village administrators authorized to extend the contract for heavy equipment with Tom Boochi excavating for an additional year, June 1, 2019, to May 31, 2020, for the unit prices specified in their bids submitted on May 16, 2018. I'll make a motion, if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval of extending contract 2018-12 for miscellaneous hardware and supplies.
Yeah, similar, similar situat, well, it's a contract that's structured differently, but it's, it's really just a discount off of list that, that they provide to, to the village for purchases locally here. And we're recommending an extension of this one as well. No, no change in the discount amount.
Okay. Being resolved, the village administrators authorized to extend the contract for miscellaneous hardware and supplies, the thermitin hardware, additional year, June 1, 2019, to May 31, 2020, for the unit prices specified in their bids submitted on May 16, 2018. I'll make the motion, if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next one, approval of extending contract 2018-13 for tree removal, tree burning, and stump grinding.
It's same, same situation.
So does that cover arborist consulting fees, or is that outside of this contract? Wouldn't we have to ask Pat to come in to look at something?
I don't remember there being an hourly rate in this contract for, for arborists, so I think that's, that's
Just
Provided to us, I'm sure, within reason, I imagine. It's never been an issue, but I'll double check just to be sure, get back to you, just, but I don't
I think he's been very helpful to the village, so
Yes.
I'm certainly in favor. I just want to make sure that they're getting what they need as well, if you know what I mean.
Yeah.
If it has to be discussed next year
Yeah.
Let's make sure that we keep it a whole
You make a part of the bid, yeah.
So you think it is included in it?
It's, I don't think there's any mention of it, but it's provided.
Okay.
Again, it's provided probably on the basis that
We're all overusing it.
Fairly reasonable. Yeah, exactly. If we're using hours and hours of consulting time, I'm sure it wouldn't be the same case.
That's good that you brought that up, Mark. Good question.
I'll check on it. Being resolved, the village administrators authorized to extend the contract for tree removal, tree burning, and stump grinding with care of trees, Inc., for additional year, June 1, 2019, to May 31, 2020, for the unit prices specified in their bids submitted on May 16, 2018. I'll make a motion, if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Dedication of the Irvington Woods Park. If you wanted Larry to
Yeah, well, it's a long time coming, and certainly the, you know, it took a little bit of time to, to get descriptions of the properties and make sure that we had proper references. The compost site is particularly, well, it's not really a compost site anymore, the organic waste transfer site is, was particularly challenging in terms of describing, and we eventually came up with something that looks like it works in the resolution, and we'll adequately describe it. But, but the rest of it, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't think you want me to go through the history of all this, but obviously, this was researched significantly. Checkr did a great job pulling out all of the prior information. The board met and, and discussed what it wanted to do in terms of parkland dedication, and we turned that, with Mary Ann's help, turned that into, into a resolution that you could adopt.
And Chet, I did not read your letter, so did you want to take the opportunity to say anything? This is not the right one.
Checkr, first, thanks for kicking us over two weeks so I could be here. I really appreciate that. This is, when I joined the Greater Irvington Land Trust Board in May of 2017, this was the first thing the board said they wanted to focus on, and they really wanted to push, because it'd been a long time coming. This has been something that people have been looking at for a long, long, many, many years. And it was a combined effort. Larry dug through a lot of records to help me get a lot of stuff. Joe and Rick worked very hard on this, and so it's a, it's a joint effort all across the board. And as I said in my letter, this resolution will increase by 50% the protected parkland of this village. That's an amazing, amazing, I can't think of any other village that could do that today. And it creates also one of the largest contiguous wood-protected areas in southern Westchester. And so I just congratulate the board, I congratulate everybody for doing it. In my letter that I sent, I, in addition to the dedication of the property for the Irvington Woods Park, I again made the request that the board take this opportunity to also designate or dedicate the Irvington Farm parcel, which is on the very northeast end of the village. It is not contiguous to the park, and there was a concern at the October 10 work session about the fact that it's not really part of the park, because it's not contiguous, you can't reach it, and I recognize that. As explained in our letter, we believe that even if it's not made part of the park, it's something that the board can and should do now to protect that open space. That, there's a tremendous value to the village, I think, of protecting permanently open space in the village, and so I would again ask the board to take this opportunity to do that. The other thing I would say is that taking a step with respect to the Irvington Woods is wonderful, but I think, as the board is aware, the woods are being challenged right now by the deer population, by the loss of undergrowth, invasive species, and just climate change. And as I have been advocating to the board, I strongly believe that the board should continue working toward preserving and protecting this wonderful resource by conducting an environmental assessment of the woods to determine how and what's the best way to maintain it and protect it going forward. And on behalf of the Greater Irvington Land Trust, we're willing to put our time and practically some of our resources into that. If we can assist that, working with the Woods Committee, with Joe, with the, you know, Recreation Parks Advisory Council, we think that would be a really great step for the board to do, marching forward. So with that, I will just leave it, but I just, just in a personal note, I've worked hard on this, and I just
Sure did.
Say how much I appreciate the care and effort that everybody in the village put into it, so it's great. So thanks.
Thank you, really, you know, thanks for all your hard work, and, you know, I enjoyed, you know, reading your, your write-ups. The one, the one regret I have in this whole process, I think you gave an unbelievable, like, guided walk, and I missed it, I was away that weekend. We're going to do it again this spring, the later spring when it's warm, but, you know, the, the amount of work that you've put into this, I can tell it's a labor of love, but, you know, it, I'd like to think that all your hard work has paid off, and we, you know, we're proud of you for all the research and work you did, and we appreciate it, and we hope you come out of the next project.
Oh. Wait for it, I've already got a thing going in my mind.
I just wanted to point out something in addition to what you were saying, Chet, which is that we're, in terms of protecting and restoring the woodlands in the park, we're not reinventing the wheel here in the sense that Hastings has just undergone a pretty extensive
Right.
Series of public meetings and consultants coming in to generate a report of what they have to do to restore and protect hillside woods. And, you know, the long and short of it is that it's not cheap, and it takes effort over many years to really bring back the understory and so forth. So, and you're probably aware of that, so I just wanted to point out to the public that we're not really reinventing the wheel. The Hastings model probably makes a lot of sense in terms of the bottom line of what you have to do, so then it becomes more of a political and monetary resource issue. The ecology and the biology are pretty much fixed, what's, what the issues and solutions are.
If, if I could, I'd just make one comment on that. I think that's absolutely true. You know, our whole approach in, approach to this problem was to do our best to get all the information out there. We really worked hard to give everybody an even playing field about what was the history of this place, and I think the same thing has to do with making judgments going forward about what kind of recreational use you make of the woods, whatever, but you really, to do that, you have to understand the current situation, and, and it is, the policy judgment about what you do with that is obviously up to all of you, but I, we believe strongly that getting everybody the basic information about the ecological, the water issues, the invasive plant issues, whatever, really gives everybody then the information they need to make the right kind of judgments, and so that's why we think this is good. Hillside Woods is a great example. You know, Dobbs Ferry, you got a grant, I don't think that DEC grant is being done again this year, unfortunately, but I think there are other opportunities for funding to do that. We've spent a lot of time looking at potential consultants who we think are equipped to do this kind of work, and we're going to independently indeed look for grant money as well, but I, I just think it's, it's a, the woods are, you know, Harrow Center in the woods is a tremendous resource. It's just a unique resource, and taking steps to, in a smart way, in a thoughtful way, to understand it, and, you know, there's a lot of competing issues with that, and that's to be done another day, but getting the facts, that's what's really important. So that's why we advocate for that. Okay.
Couple with that, we probably have a little, kind of, back and forth here, but one thing I'd like to see at the nature center, kind of looking at you, Joe, if possible, is to get some, the Woods Committee to really consider restoring the exclusions that, I don't know if there were one or two there that
There was one, and it is scheduled to be fixed this spring.
Yeah, and unfortunately, to make it really work as a demonstration project, it's got to, you know, stay fixed for a number of years. What they, the second point you do, Chet, and I think you're probably aware of this, but the public may not be, what they have found in Hills, there is a sense of urgency without going too crazy, because everything becomes urgent in the environmental realm. What they've been finding out is that recovery of, you know, existing species, ephemeral spring flowers and understory plants is, has not been as robust as they expected, because the ti, seeds are only viable for a certain, like, the time in the soil, some seeds are viable for only a couple of years, some are viable for, you know, 10, 15, 20 years in the soil, but the deer damage, excessive browsing has been increasing to such a, for such a long period of time that there's a number of species that are now effectively eradicated from the understory. They can't recover because their seeds are no longer viable. So that's where you have to get in with proactive activity to try to reseed the understory and comprehensively with the kinds of plants that should have been there.
I think that's true, and I actually have read all the reports they've done, I've talked to the trustees in Hastings, and I'm, I'm not flipping all the details of it, but I've been trying to be abreast of it, because that's really important. And again, identifying exactly what, as best you can, what the problems are, give you the ability then to make judgments. And I understand in Hastings, they're going to have to make judgments. It can be very expensive to do things, they're not going to do some things, there's going to be parts of that woods that they're going to say it can't really be rehabilitated, other parts they can. But they will have the ability to make those judgments in a smart way, because they have had an opportunity to do this kind of assessment, and that's, I think, a first step for this village to do if it really wants to, having taken a step to preserve all this property, ensure that it's there in five years, in 10 years, in 20 years, and some of it may not, some of it may not survive, but the extent we can protect it, whatever, for all the new people who are in the committee, that's a really positive thing, so.
So the, the one last, because I'd like to light a fire to this, too, but the one last brim comment, which no one's really said, maybe you did, Chet, but I apologize if I didn't hear it. The issue we're working up against besides losing the seed bank and et cetera, et cetera, is that in fact, there is no regrowth going on and hasn't been for a number of years, which means that there's no woodland recovery going on.
Right.
And that means that as trees age out or come down due to storms or other kinds of problems, there is no recovery, except of invasive species, effectively, that the deer won't touch.
I think that's right. The woods are going to die.
Or become Norway mabels on Atlantis.
Yeah, and, you know, you kind of look at, maybe not see it day to day, but if you, I've, I've ridden my bike in that woods for 20 years, and you see it over the years, and it's really remarkable.
If you can see more than 50 feet in the woodlands, then you've got a problem.
Yeah, you've got a problem. So, anyways, I just thank the board for all the kind of caring
Thank you. I, I find this fascinating, and I, I don't want you to answer this now, because obviously we have to move on, but I was, I've always wondered, and I'll talk to you or Mark about this, but it seemed like the Rockefeller Preserve had an area with a deer fence up for all the times I walked there, and I'm, I'm just wondering if there's anywhere that's had any success. Don't answer this now, we'll move on, but, you know, looking at somewhere in this general northeast that's had success with this would be great, as far as useful information. Anyway, thank you.
Whereas over the last 42 years, the village of Irvington has
Stop, not, I
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought we had to, we're going to have to adopt the EAF, right?
It's part of the resolution.
Right, before we go forward, I had some, a couple of questions about it, because I felt that there were a couple of places that I would have answered a little bit differently, and to be clear, I just want to know if, if I'm just being anal retentive, or if there's something else going on. One of them was talking about the wetlands and water bodies, it's more than just the Irvington Reservoir, right? I mean, there are additional water bodies, and certainly additional wetlands in terms of the, whatever the precursor to Barney Brook is called, and the wetlands up by the old compost site, so there's, to me, the water bodies and wetlands are insufficient to the list of what should be in that, unless we're just going to say, you know.
I don't think, I think the reason we answered that way is, is that none of the other wetlands are large enough to be considered listed with the DEC or anything identified by the DEC, so they may be local and exist, but they weren't, they weren't big enough to be
Well, the DEC shut down the compost site because of the wetlands right next to it, so there's certainly
Well, you know what, it would be easy to pen it in. The answer to the quest, the question was, does any proportion of the area contain wetlands or water bodies? We said yes, and then it said identify.
Yeah.
If there's one identified, you could easily add another one if you want to. The bottom line is going to be the same, you're going to neglect this thing, but
No, no, I was just wondering why we were not, I said it could be anal retentive.
I said
So they call it, so it's Hermits Wetland? Is that appropriate?
I don't know what the name of it is.
That's what I think I've seen it referred to as.
And then, and what's the, what's the
Yeah, okay.
The pond up by
Marshall's
Marshall's Pond, yeah.
So there is a, there's actually an official wetlands map, which lists, there's Hermits Pond, there's, I think, I don't know how many are in the actual woods, but there's probably five or six. I, I don't have a map here with me, but I could easily supply it for everybody.
Could you just say an associated
You don't need that, you don't need that detail for the
Okay.
No, I appreciate that, but for this form, but if Larry just pens in what Mark says and other, because then the next question is, is, would it alter any of them? And he answers, no.
I'd have to, just being
I know, Mark.
So the other one
I'm just explaining why we don't have to get every wetland identified.
So the other one is, as long as we have Dave, that's my favorite wetland, so. The other one was archaeological site. Don't we consider the Hermits Grave to be an archaeological site?
Okay, good.
Or is, maybe that's
But it won't, it's, again, it won't affect, right?
No, it won't, but I mean
So you could say yes. I think we could call that archaeological, but, okay.
Larry, don't just be penned in.
Okay.
That's it, I was just saying, I thought to be clear, we should give, put the record. Brian, now I'm
Forty-two years.
Whereas, over the last 42 years, the village of Irvington has acquired a number of parcels of property in the northeastern portion of the village, either by quitclaim deeds from the town of Greenberg or by seller dedication of the property's owners, and whereas it was either a condition of the transfer or the intention of the village that his properties can be maintained as public parkland, whereas the village has maintained those parcels as public parkland, and which is to formalize the use of the properties as public parkland. However, certain of these properties are subject to restrictions on their use, either by deed restriction, intermunicipal agreement, or other agreement, so which restrictions are not affected by this dedication resolution. And whereas, in February 2018, the Greater Irvington Land Trust prepared to present to the board of trustees a comprehensive historical overview of the Irvington Woods, and whereas by Resolution 2011-100, approved and adopted on August 11, 2011, those of Irvington resolved that the Ohio Nature Center, located on Mount Grove, the Peter Ollies Ollies Trail System, and the Irvington Reservoir be collectively known as the Irvington Woods. And whereas, the Village of Irvington's 2003 comprehensive plan recognized the Irvington Reservoir as important as a natural resource, as an alternative water supply source, and supports its continued protection of the Irvington Reservoir of water quality. And whereas, this dedication is an unlisted act under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the Board of Trustees has reviewed the environmental assessment form and determined that the action will have no adverse environmental impacts, now therefore be it resolved, and the Board of Trustees issue a negative declaration under SECR. And be further resolved, and the Board of Trustees hereby dedicates, reaffirms this dedication as public parkland the following parcels owned by the Village of Irvington, and there's 13 detailed. Further resolved that the above dedicated parcels be known as the Irvington Woods Park. And further resolved that the Irvington Reservoir and immediately surrounding area, although not dedicated as public parkland at this time, shall continue to be included in parts of the Peter Ollies Trail System and be identified as part of the broader Irvington Woods, as provided in Resolution 2011-100, and be subject to the rules and regulations applicable to the Village of Irvington Public Park. I'll make a motion. If someone would like to get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chet, thanks again for all your work, and Joe and Rick, the ball's in your court.
Very exciting. Thank you. Really exciting.
We're going to send some deer your way.
You don't have to. They know where to find me.
They take care of the geese.
Now we have to re-math.
How about that? How about what happened in Connecticut? And they tried to burn off the field. Did you see that?
Yes.
25 gallons of gas to dry a field.
Good thing there's now records back from my first few years at Irvington.
It's given Chris Scotty ideas.
Can you imagine?
Yeah, it was pretty wild. We never went that far.
I didn't hear that. What happened?
In Ridgefield, Connecticut, they were going to play a high school baseball game on a field, and the field was wet because it had rained, so they decided to pour 25 gallons of gas and light up...
Light up a fire.
Ryan.
Fifty thousand dollars.
There are a lot of smart people in Ridgefield.
Bet you it was really dry after that, though.
Yeah, it was. Until the fire department got there, then it was wet again.
So to say, there are a lot of attorneys in Ridgefield, Connecticut, but not Chet Kirk.
Next up is the resignation of village historian. Resolve...
Before it be resolved, can I?
Sure.
Yeah, so I just... This is the resignation of Nina Caparel Dawson as village historian. And I just, on behalf of Pat Ryan, who couldn't be here tonight, she asked that I extend my appreciation to Nina for her years of service as the village historian. And she is further aware of the projected other names that Nina provides, three people who are all... Two are former board members... No, one is a former board member of the Historical Society, and two of the other names are current board members. And she asked that there be a liaison from this board to meet with her and talk about recommendations for a replacement. So Brian, I'm asking you if you have any ideas about who the liaison might be to discuss the suggestions for replacements.
Would you like to do it, Connie?
I would be happy to, Brian.
Okay.
I think that's an excellent idea.
And I think Mark could be the liaison.
So... But Pat's going to write an official letter to the board and express this appreciation.
She asked me officially, you could be Nina's.
Okay. I will do this. Anyway, now you can go ahead with your resolution.
Resolve to accept with regret the resignation of Nina Caparel Dawson as village historian effective April 15, 2019. I'll make the motion if I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the resignation and appointments of the volunteer committee, the Architectural Review Board. A little reshuffling here. Did anyone want to give any background on this, or do you want to record?
I... Yeah, I don't know how much. How deep do you want to get into it?
Not very.
Okay. With Deb Hargraves, she's starting to back away from most of her, you know, attachments, not the least of which is the ARB and the School Board. But she's obviously... She's had her house on the market for over a year, and she's hoping to get close to getting rid of it. She doesn't want to totally disassociate herself from, you know, the ARB. So what she had asked was that if, you know, if that she could flip-flop with one of the two alternates. And in further conversations between her and I, we felt, certainly I felt for sure, that in the summertime, one of our members that are architects is pretty much, you know, gone for the year. He goes to the Cape or, you know, something like that. And the other architect that's on the board is, you know, a busy architect. So rather than... The first alternate was a gentleman who's not an architect, and the second alternate is a gentleman who is an architect. So I felt that, especially in the summer months coming, that we should have an architect. So it's not that we can't, you know, jump over the first alternate, but that's what we did. That's what we were asking you to approve. And then she will become the second alternate, and the first alternate will stay the first alternate. So that's pretty much...
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. It's... If you know what we go through in the summertime, it's really rough to get the architects here.
Great, thank you very much. Resolve to accept with regret the resignation of Deborah Hargraves as a member of the Architecture Review Board, and resolve to appoint James Crapp as a member of the Architecture Review Board for a term to expire December 2019. And be it further resolved to appoint Deborah Hargraves as the second alternate of the Architecture Review Board for a term to expire December 2021. I'll make the motion if I get a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of contract 2019-05 for Prosecution Services.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward. I think I had mentioned in previous meetings that our prosecutor for essentially building matters had backed away Matt Spencer from his... From taking this responsibility on. So we were searching for a new prosecutor to use in that role and had a very good interview and discussion with Michael Becker, who is, you know, well aware of the background of a lot of different items that are going on in the village that are in need of prosecution. So he's anxious to get started.
He lives... He must live in Irvington?
I don't believe he does.
Oh, he doesn't? Oh, okay. I guess he doesn't have to.
No.
Just that Matt Spencer did, that was...
He happened to.
That was just a happens, okay.
Yeah. So this doesn't change any of our regular, what I used to call regular, but our village prosecutor, who handles tickets and, you know, violations in front of the court, traffic violations.
So that will remain the same?
Yeah, no change there. This is actually like a special prosecutor, but I didn't want to use that term.
Right. Worth the term.
Can you release his report?
Exactly, yeah. So no, I didn't. I just said...
We could be on CNN all day.
Hope we could color code him. Red could be short-term rental violations.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Resolve to hire Michael C. Becker at Rutherford &amp; Christie LLP, located 803rd Avenue, 94, New York, New York, for Prosecution Services as needed. I'll make the motion. If I can get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The force of boards, standing committees, and officers.
All right, so I have two things, I guess, one of which is that you've already mentioned for the Tree Commission, you know, the Arbor Day event on April 26 at 10:00 a.m. right out here, North Ferris Street. But I forgot what day April 26 is.
It's a week?
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday.
I forgot it was Tuesday.
April 26?
It's a Friday.
It's Friday.
Friday. Oh, wow, okay, I was really off.
Yeah.
Okay.
24th on Wednesday, but it comes on Friday.
Yeah, the event happens pretty quickly. It's just, you know, there's a new tree in the ground and some pictures taken, but it's nice to see the planting go on. And also, Tree Commission reiterates that it's looking for additional members, and so if you're interested in serving in terms of what the Tree Commission does, et cetera, you can feel free to get in touch with myself or Larry, I suppose.
Absolutely.
We can discuss that. The GPTF, the two comments, one is they're starting to go into regular meetings now, so they've requested my attendance at their next regular meeting, as opposed to the more informal ones they've been having. The, I think, the third Thursday of the month, and I want to say it's at 7:30 p.m. in the Tiffany Room. So that will be an ongoing monthly meeting, and if anyone's interested and you haven't talked to one of the GPTF folks while you're doing food waste recycling, then come to the third Thursday evening meeting at 7:30. And they brought up another topic, which I brought up tonight, which I think we need to schedule, Larry, which is about the gas leaf blower sunsetting clause and the kind of, for want of a better word, predicament that we're in at this... With not following up on that. Which I sent an email to everyone.
Great. Summer camp opportunities are still there, but times and opportunities are dwindling. Early bird, summer day camp registration continues April 24 and May 4, and there's a price increase to the regular rates after May 4. Teenscape Session 1 is already filled, there's only a few spots remaining for Session 2. There will be a public meeting held on Tuesday, April 23, 7:00 p.m. in the Senior Center, a presentation on the progress of the Matheson Park Project and recommendations of rules for the Irvington Woods will be the featured topics, and update on other park rules will be discussed. That was, I believe, today sent out on an email blast.
Email, Facebook, and we'll go out again on Friday.
It's out there. 2019 youth baseball and softball program is underway, the 2019 adult softball league has started, registration for adult tennis is ongoing. And there are a bunch of meetings, I'll just give some times and dates. The next meeting of the Community Advisory Board is scheduled for Tuesday, May 14, 8:00 a.m. in the Senior Center. Recreation of Parks Advisory Committee, Wednesday, April 17, 7:00 p.m. in the Senior Center. Irvington Woods Committee, Thursday, April 25, 7:00 p.m., the Ohio Nature Center. And the next meeting of the ISCA, the Executive Board, is scheduled for Tuesday, April 23, 8:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. And the one thing that ties them all together is Joe will be at every one of those meetings.
Right. Okay. So, okay. Well, Halloween is coming already. There's a half Halloween event at the Irvington Town Hall Theater, when all the bands, the four, I think, bands that play on Halloween outdoors around town are all going to be at the theater. So it's called Half Halloween, just in case. And that's April 26. It's a fundraiser, 7:30. I think it's going to be up last.
Yeah, fundraiser for the theater.
For the theater, so...
Beer and bands.
Isn't Kira in one of them?
Beer is in one of the bands.
Kira's in one of them. We've got former trustee John Malone in one of them.
That's right.
We've got Doug McClure, we've got... Oh, tons of...
MBE, who's on the theater commission.
Oh, yes. Yes, a lot of... Anyway.
75.
April 26, be there. Okay. The other things, three quick things that I've attended on behalf of the village. The Legend of Sleepy Hollow, there's a 200th anniversary of the publishing of The Legend. So Sleepy Hollow, Tarrytown are doing tons of stuff, and Irvington is doing quite a bit also. So you know how the economic driver of that whole season in Sleepy Hollow and Tarrytown is driven by the national mania for the Headless Horsemen and all those stories. So we will be part of that. The Historical Society, the theater, the library. I don't know if they've asked Joe to do anything yet, but in the next 18 months, I bet they will. So be ready for the Headless Horsemen. The second thing is really exciting to me in that the... I mentioned this before, but the Bridge Authority, the New Maria Colmo Bridge, had funded what's called Travel Stories. It's a phone app for people who travel in this area. And the bridge has funded that all the communities along the Hudson, obviously connected to the bridge, will get a chance to tell two stories about their village. That was the first grant. Now, a second grant seems to be done in which, right at the entrance to the bridge, there will be kiosks where people who are going to walk across or bike across will be able to stop, and there'll be informational spots. And what they have asked Sleepy Hollow, Tarrytown, and Irvington to do, and Nyack on the other side, is to provide way more stories about their community, including restaurants that are in historic buildings and a lot of publicity for the village, because that bridge and the pedestrians and the bikers, if it's anything like Walkway Across the Hudson in Poughkeepsie, it's a giant bringer of visitors.
It's a lot bigger, though. You're going to be a better walker.
Yeah, be a walker. Okay, so that's good news. That's going to happen pretty soon. And the other thing is, you know, there were certain things that I found interesting at the county center when George Latimer spoke. You can see all his comments online, but there were very interesting things that relate to us. And he talked a lot about Playland, and so there's a whole new publicity for Playland this year. And there will be... I didn't get all the details, but each town, so we're part of the town of Greenberg, there will be some time in the summer when it's either going to be reduced cost to go or maybe free. Maybe Joe will find out about this. I don't know if there's communication, but when somebody knows that, that will be great to get the word out, because Playland, you know, it's a little expensive to take a whole bunch of people there, family members. So anyway, I think that's interesting to keep in touch with. There are a lot of things I found interesting in his talk, and some of it's important to us and some doesn't involve us too much. But if anybody wants to know more, I'm happy to tell them. That's it. Nothing else.
Village Administrator's Report.
So just one announcement. We were notified by Fieldpoint that they are going to be paving their private roads. The paving's starting the week of the 22nd, next week. We met, several of us, village staff, to ask a few questions amongst ourselves, which we've posed to them. They've asked a few things of us in terms of where they might be able to park temporarily on the public road up there and, you know, a few different options. So we have a good dialogue going back and forth, but, you know, it's a challenging spot for sure. All the roads are very, very narrow and, you know... But we covered lots of areas, lots of topics, things like parking and garbage pickup during this time, you know, depending on what they happen to be doing on any particular road. Parking in the Fieldpoint North Broadway, the Broadway Main Street parking lot has a, you know, a couple of cars, there's an overflow, a few different things. So it's good dialogue.
Brian, May 5, girls' celebration.
Oh, yes. That's going out fast, actually.
Yeah.
It's Sunday.
What is it made of?
Sunday, May 5, from 4 to 6 o'clock. I forgot to announce it, I apologize. At the Main Street School Parking Lot, we'll be honoring the girls' state championship team.
Oh, yeah.
Working together with the athletic department. And we're going to move it up to the parking lot, so we don't have to worry about any overtime, and we can do it there, and the schools will work it together. It'll be a nice event. We're going to give each girl a miniature version of Gold Ball, so it should be a nice day, a couple of food trucks there. So we're going to have publicity out on that very soon.
I should say that George Latimer at the state called out the girls' basketball team as in his paragraph about winning sports teams.
I'm pretty sure George is joining us for the event.
Okay.
I've already talked to his office.
Ah, okay, good.
Village Treasurer's Report.
The budget's over.
How do you order right now?
Let's start planning for the next year, what do you think?
Life is going to be tough, though.
Actually, we're working on a new program for our taxes. So, you know, as you know, we modified our water bills, and we upgraded everything, we're doing something similar for our tax payments, and be, also been taking online payments, where people can pay at a nominal fee or no fee, we're still working that out, where they can pay from the luxury of their own living room.
Okay.
Village Attorney's Report.
Yeah.
Pull the comment.
I just want to thank you. It was a pretty good night. Bledged in a new park, so thank you.
But you know, you have to do, you have to give us permits.
Show proof of residence.
Two pieces of review of action items.
So the one main one was the, just following up on the Arvers question that you had, as far as the contract. There's other, other things, like working out this whole Main Street watering thing, but that's a much broader
It's not really Arvers, as much as the
Yeah.
And I guess I had requested by email, could we, the thing about the EV charging stations, can we get that on the, on the tracking list, so we know as status comes in?
Yeah.
Hello, my magic.
I don't know what's doing that?
No, it's, it's feedback, I'm not sure.
It's ghosts.
Someone's phone is
I'll make a motion to adjourn, if I could get a second?
Second.
All in favor?